And sending back to the planning board saying, "Provide comments on both so that we can actually consider it." I mean, I see that alternative happening as well.
Yeah.
May I ask a question? Is there, I don't mean to complicate it anymore, but is there a way to separate the stone patio with the porch and its, and the structure being the deck?
So you could go ahead?
So we could go ahead and do something. That way, you know, because not with this document.
I mean, they have to amend their application and withdraw the addition and the deck. The patio is not a structure, so that wouldn't require building permit, wouldn't go in front of the ZBA. We're just amending a COA to allow for the increase in impervious surface.
And the extra lighting.
Right.
So if you provided this drawing without the deck and the addition, then they could go ahead, is that right? So it'd just be redrawing.
Yeah. And resubmit it and then we have to come back for another meeting?
I, yeah. Well, you would, because you'd have a different application. You'd have an application minus the deck and porch.
Could we?
No, but to understand it, can we just submit that to Joe?
We do a, like a quick approval or something.
But, I mean, why not as part of this hearing? I mean, you're not adding elements, you're taking away elements.
No, no, but I don't know what happens over here.
Oh, okay.
It's not a document that we can append to the file.
So you're saying, because the patio intersects the proposed porch?
Yeah.
Basically, it's, you know.
We need it, we would need a doc, we need a document.
We'd have to keep it open, but a decision could be drafted that allowed for the extension of that patio.
We could do that.
Perpendicular to the house extending straight back.
We could do that.
And then just the plan gets revised, gets dissected into the record when, as the board.
Yeah, we could do that. I think we could do that. We could, if that were the case, I mean, we do that sometimes, you know, where we change documents and we schedule, we have a draft COA and we schedule that review and at the second, if an applicant comes in with revised drawings and we look at the drawings and sign off on them. So, we could do that. If we did that, are there any conditions that we would place on that?
On the new, on the structure of the porch and the deck?
No, just on, just on the patio, no porch or deck.
Okay, well, it's the lighting.
The lighting. Then they'd have the same lighting 1920 and 1425.
I'm just not sure how that's really going to work for you, because that patio is going to tie into the deck, so it's just not going to light.
No, I was going to say, we do need a portion of this deck in order to get access to the patio, so.
That's what I mean.
Why couldn't that be part of it too?
Suddenly, it all changes, because now we're doing structure. Because even a little bit of the deck comes under the structure.
That's qualified too.
Yep.
Yep, but if you keep that structure out of the setback.
It's outside. So whatever structure we have.
And that makes it much easier, this is what.
That's what we're saying.
Unless you build up the patio.
Are you thinking about just delaying, just trying to get it through the ZBA meantime, having some time to work on this, or are you thinking abandoning your, your porch deck? That's what I, are you thinking, forget about the porch deck, or are you thinking, do the patio so we have something and then do the porch deck and try to get that through?
Or some modified design or something.
The only thing I don't like about that is that if we allow them to do a portion of the deck and suddenly it's the deck like the bridge to nowhere, you go before the ZBA and say, "This is like a hardship," you know, because.
It's a self-improvement.
Right, okay. Just as long as we have got that little.
We'd have the plan for the deck, you'd have to redraw, so it's not like we're not going to.
Right, so it's not just like the bridge to nowhere.
Come with the modified plan.
Yeah, you can come with the modified.
I don't think you can take advantage out of doing that, but.
Well, you know, all these things take, you know, it'd be another six weeks before we got approval and.
And then we know what.
No, there are winters coming and they.
It happens.
With the decks, you still need a special permit, that's what Sue's saying. With the decks, you still need a special permit.
If you're in the setback.
No. It's an expansion, because it's an expansion on a non-conforming lot of a structure.
Right.
So you're still needing the special permit.
So if those decks changed to stone, it wouldn't be a stellar structure. If it's stone patio.
It has to be, if it's level on the ground, it has to be level on the ground. If it's up.
It's a structure.
It's a structure.
Now, if the law, because I'm noticing that there's an, I think there's an error in John's memo, because the deficient in front of it, actually, because the law was created prior to 1997 in District B.
C.
But this property is in District B.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
So, well, I mean, that actually makes it more the, more the case that C, yeah, if it's before 1997, it requires 200, 125 feet. So if the law's been, been in existence, I think, I think he quoted the wrong frontage dimension.
What's going on now, suddenly it's getting more complicated?
So the issue, the issue is, if it's not deficient for frontage, but the structure is still in setback.
Right.
Is that an expansion of a non-conforming structure? Because the structure is still in setback if you built the deck.
Is it a conforming lot or not, is that the question?
No. If the lot is conforming, but the structure is in setback.
No, 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 is the lot conforming?
Yes.
If the lot is conforming, now it needs a variance, period.
So, he identified that it's deficient for frontage.
If it's conforming, it needs a variance.
Oh, but you're saying it's not deficient for frontage?
I think he pulled the wrong figure, because.
Is it conforming?
The lot is, was created prior to 1997, and for that district requires 125 feet of frontage.
Oh, come on, guys. We, we're trying to do our job here, we've got to get accurate information. Is this lot conforming or is it non-conforming?
He identified that it was deficient in frontage, and that makes it.
But you said that's a mistake.
I'm saying that that's a mistake, because looking back at the zoning bylaw.
So is it conforming or non-conforming?
I think it is, I'm just checking.
It's conforming. Conforming, but the non-conforming.
The house?
The house is non-conforming on the lot.
Yeah, yeah, but the lot is conforming.
The lot is conforming.
Right, so that means a variance.
Right, so.
That's clear.
Here's the.
Or at least the finding, and that actually puts the zoning board of appeals first.
Oh, and then so we can just give it that.
Yeah, it makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
Hold on for a second.
The rules are shifting.
Well, you're, if it's conforming lot, you're in better shape, believe me.
It's not conforming.
I'm trying to just work back why.
Because I think it's really.
Building inspector identified special permit, because it's the same.
The details going back, we go back to the project.
Yeah, but it's based on research that also.
We're going to have to continue it. I don't think we have a choice. Sorry. We've got to get accurate information that everybody agrees to.
Just, if, you can just give me just.
But we've got a memorandum from the building inspector that says it's not conforming.
Right.
So you're, we need a memorandum from the building inspector that says it is conforming.
That's correcting his.
For us to continue the hearing.
That's correcting his error.
Yeah, we can't just overrule him and say.
But if it's, if it is, turns out to be a conforming lot, then they can go right to the ZBA.
That's what I believe, you know, it's a conforming lot with a non-conforming structure, which means they need a, I think it's actually a finding, that it's not more detrimental.
And this is pertaining to the porch itself, or?
The whole kit kaboom.
The patio as well?
Yeah.
But then they do have.
So we wouldn't have had to come to you at all?
Well, you would, you would later. That puts the zoning, believe it or not, this is what it's like, this is why, I'm sorry, David, but I like to stand this judge up against the wall, because the judge put this spin on things that makes, that makes it crazy. If it's, if it's a conforming lot that only requires a finding, you can go to the ZBA first and then come to the planning board for psych my review. But if it requires a special permit, you've got to come to the planning board first and then zoning board appeals.
This is good for you, because you go to the ZBA and they'll either say yes or no to this.
If it's conforming, the lot is conforming.
Yeah, exactly, the lot is conforming, and then when you come back, you've already seen it.
Right, I, I think it's a simple matter for us, if the zoning board gives you a finding.
What about the patio, though? If they were coming in front just for the patio, because.
Why not that? Are you really going to build this in this fall?
Well, it begins construction.
Wait till the spring?
No, it's better to start sooner and.
So they can have the first picnic where they get formed.
Well, and because things settle over the winter and, you know, it's just construction process, it's a better thing to.
I, I think we're not going to reach a decision, because we don't know what kind of a lot it is. And even if, if you say to us that it's conforming, we have a memo in writing from the building inspector that says it isn't, so we can't, we can't, we're frozen, let's just say, why is it?
Says it's not conforming because deficient in frontage, which he's stating required is 175 and provided is 163, but it's only five.
I know, I know why that's happening.
Okay.
Because the house on record says it was built in 2005, yet the lot was actually created because it was originally built in 1954, so I could see why he might think that the lot had been created later.
I don't know.
But I mean, we had already made clear that this was, this was an existing house.
But you got the COA in 2003.
Yeah.
So the lot, you know, the lot was already there and the house was already there in 2003, so I don't think that was the.
It's substantial proof that they changed.
Well, he might, if it's listed in the assessment record, it says 2003, then he would have, he would have.
But that's when the COA was issued, there was already a house there.
Yeah, but he might not have known that, because it says, like, in the assessor record, it says.
On the assessor records, they just change it.
Might not like it, why?
I don't know, but at this point, I don't see how we're going to.
No, because we.
Clarification on a number of points, including from the town council about what our role is in these.
Let's do this, we'll continue this here, and Joe will go back and get it straight, whether it's conforming or not conforming. If it's conforming, then what I would suggest you do is withdraw your application, go to the zoning board of appeals, get your finding, then come back to us with the same drawings, and, and resubmit, and we'll, and we'll just open the hearing again. If it's, if it isn't, if it isn't conforming, then we'll, we'll discuss the terms of the conditions after continuing here, because, you know, it's the only way I can think of working out at this point. So either way.
So it's conforming, ZBA first, it's not a proper plan.
That's it. We don't know what this tell you right now, because we have two, we have conflicting information about whether it's conforming, so, I'm sorry.
The building inspector had, talked down back over the summer as far as, as we raised whether it was a variance or a special permit, so I'm trying to figure out where, where then he made a left turn instead of a right turn, so this.
And what's the purpose of designing all of this?
Well, that could be for the fall.
Yeah, it depends on the zoning board of appeals is scheduled.
We're trying to get it.
Waiting for it.
Not for months.
For months, because they. Yeah, they only meet like once a month, so, but they're going to be needing more because of these. They might not like it, but it's going, that's what's going to happen. I'd get on as soon as you can with that, in any case.
Keep trying.
Keep trying.
Any help you guys, it's always appreciated. Other different board, so, okay, so, the other issue, I mean, with the light, we reduced the lumens by eliminating one of the lights and make, ensure that this sharp cutoff and this night sky light.
Right, and that's the out of setback.
That'd be out of setback.
Then we can write, we can write conditions, we'd have to run by town council, then we could send the zoning board of appeals for them to make a determination, if it's a non-conforming lot. If it's a conforming lot, then, forget the whole thing, you've got to go to the zoning board of appeals for a finding, which is better for you, because I guess it is, just a guess, they'll probably give you the finding on porch extension, so.
And then we have to come back to you. After that?
Yeah, but once they've signed off, in that process, then it, for us, it's a straight, it's like my review, and I don't think there's that much worth to talk about. It's really founded on lumens and maybe, I don't know, maybe that's it. So, that's where we are, sorry.
Wow.
You thought, you were just.
Wow, and already three months of dealing with this, too.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm sorry.
No, you're doing your job.
We're trying. Much of doing a very small.
Yeah.
But not being a very large step for.
I'll, I'll take you a call tomorrow.
All right, I appreciate it, thanks, guys. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
I totally empathize. If I, you know, if I were in your shoes, I would just be pulling my hair out, I totally empathize. I know that doesn't help you.
Well, it, it actually helps a little.
Thank you.
Well, I could assure you that pulling your hair out, that won't help you.
Right. All right. Till next time.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. All right, all right, get to the edge of Hill. Okay, we're ready for, is, is Kim on leave now?
She's on Dr. Roy's orders, just a second. I have, I have comments in form of the email that I can read into the record.
Okay, we're ready to start the hearing for 13 Pigeon Hill. Just for the record, Roy Bellbash is accusing himself. We've given this hearing about 30 minutes. If we could limit the presentation to 15 minutes, then we give us 10 minutes for consultant and planning board comments, and then another 10 minutes or so for comments from the audience. So, just so that everybody will know who we are, my name is Al Ablot, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and my other board members are.
Sue Zacharides.
David Rambleson.
Roy Chalmers.
Yeah.
That's our town planner, Joseph Layden, Dave Conway, our original hearing consultant. All right, who's ready to start the presentation?
My name is Jeffrey Bump, I'm the one who's going to be buying the property, my partner Sally Hannett. I'm here with Brian Nelson from West, and Kirsty Musku, our landscape designer. We're, we got the approval from the historical commission to take them in the bungalow on the property. We're planning on building, that house, some drawings out.
Sure.
Building a 4,700 square foot shingle house that is, taking some of its inspiration from a house that burned down on Webster Road.
I realize that we were 700 square feet smaller, you wouldn't have to see our smiling faces.
We tried, and I'd like to see your smiling face. We tried to keep it as, as small as we could and still fit, you know, the things that, you know, it's a spec house, so we kind of had the market to think about, too. We tried to make the house fit in well with the layout of the property. It's on a slope, so the house is pushed up pretty much on a level part of the property, and there's a walkout at the area that slopes around to the southeast. Gray shingles, gila stone on the portany walls and fireplace, you know. This is the, this was kind of our beginning inspiration for making it fit into something that looked like it had been there for a while.
Could you just explain what that is?
Oh, it's the Hail Coburn House, I saw the picture in Pam's book three or four years ago, actually, and I thought it was pretty interesting. And then when we wanted to build something that was historically similar and fit into the neighborhood of the same time period, that popped up in my mind, and we kind of used that as a stepping off point for a lot of the design details. And historical commission liked that, so we're going to run with it, hopefully.
Okay, can we take a look at the site plan, is there a plan or something?
Yeah, Brian. We use copies of the neighborhood inventory. For the record, my name is Brian Nelson, engineer with Central West Engineering, and start quickly, and I'll look through the neighborhood inventory board, and our locus is located at the intersection of Pigeon Hill and Hilltop Road, right in the center of the board, right here. This is a photo of the existing house, it's a one and a half story bungalow, the gross floor area of approximately 1,700 square feet. And although essentially clockwise around, butter to the, directed butter to the north is number seven Hilltop Road, and shown in the photo of the top black pin, corner of the board, it's got a gross floor area of just over 4,000 square feet. Butter to that is number 11 Hilltop Road, which is shown on the top right corner. Actually, I think you could, it's kind of going through each one of them, what you could say is that this, this proposed house is going to, is going to be consistent with the sizes of the surrounding houses. Okay. With that, again, you know, gross floor areas are, for the most part, in the range of 4,000 square feet, so if everyone's set with this, I'll skip to the existing conditions.
Go ahead.
This is an existing conditions board of the property, north is going straight up the page, Pigeon Hill Road is located down here, and again, we're at the intersection of Pigeon Hill and Hilltop, Hilltop Road essentially heads up to the northeast. Property shown on Western Assessor's map, 23, it's lot number 13, property contains just over 40,000 square feet, just about 0.92 acres. We're located in a residence District B zone, which is a 40,000 square foot area requirement and a 200 foot minimum frontage. The Pigeon Hill and Hilltop are actually both seen in rows, in the center of Western. Existing house is shown in brown, pretty much right in the center of the lot, it's got a footprint of 1,218 square feet. The average existing grade plane around the house is elevation 199.3. The ridge elevation is 226.6, and our first floor is just over, right over 205, 205.1. The high point topographically from the lot is pretty much in the center of the northern boundary, right here, elevation essentially shed downhill to the southwest and the southeast. It was approximately 26 feet in elevation, high point, right in the center down to the southeast lot corner. The existing driveway is located off Hilltop Road, in this location right here. Existing impervious area on the site is 3,592 square feet, that's the house, the driveway, and there is an existing detached garage over at the southeast corner, right here. There are no weapons on the site. Very quick run through the existing conditions, but I'm going to move on to the proposed dozen. Proposed site plan is oriented the same way, again, north is going straight up the page, Pigeon Hill Road running down here, the intersection of Pigeon Hill Road and Hilltop, and Hilltop Road running up to the north. You've seen the existing house is shown in red, in this location right here, and proposed house is actually shown in brown, pretty much right in the center of the lot. The long axis of the house is running essentially parallel to Pigeon Hill Road as opposed to, which is kind of a 90 degree flip from the existing condition. The gross floor area is just over 4,700 square feet, well, that's 11.8% of the lot area. Our existing average grade plane is 198.2, which is about a foot or so lower than the average grade plane of the existing house. The first floor elevation for the proposed house is elevation 202, which is just over three feet lower than the existing first floor, so we'll be able to kind of pull this house down into the ground a little bit more than the existing. And the proposed ridge is 228.3, which is about 1.4 feet higher than the existing ridge, and it's also 30.1 feet, just over 30 feet above the average existing grade plane, so we're well under the 37 foot maximum. Proposed setback is just over 55 feet, it's closest, right in this area right here. The septic system is located up in this kind of dogleg area up to the northeast, it's an existing five bedroom septic that was constructed in the, this early 2090s.
Or 12.
Yeah, 93 or 94, then you wanted to bring it out. With the proposed driveway, and we've got a terrace around the front of the house, and then another terrace with a set of stairs leading down. This side of the house is going to be a walkout essentially, so this will be a walkout base over here, essentially, and us to kind of push this house right into the hillside. We do have a subsurface infiltration system proposed, right off the southwest corner of the garage, and essentially, this system will infiltrate, will store and infiltrate all storm events from the two-year up through the 100-year storm, the entire roof surface. So with that system in place, we'll see a decrease in runoff rates from the two-year storm up through the 100-year storm, approximately 25% reductions in the rates, and the volumes will actually, the discharge offset will decrease approximately 5%. Our proposed impervious area, house, garage, terrace, is approximately 5,418 square feet, which is an addition of 1,826 square feet. One other thing I'd like to point out is the existing garage, the detached garage over here is proposed to be razed, and I'm going to turn it over to Kirsty to talk about landscaping.
I'll start with the car escape. I designed a modest, loose down patio from the top off the front terrace, and one down below, a lower grade, there's an entrance patio here on the side entrance. All of these patios are suffered by plant materials, flowering and evergreen mixture. And then, we've addressed, some of it we've done on our own, some of it is core recommendation for the sidewalk, so I think that was 2019, it wasn't until right here. We added an evergreen buffer to the neighbor, the mark, is that the mark right there? And we added an evergreen buffer down here off of the corner of the property to soften the use or direction of the sidewalk. We're transplanting large pines around the site, down to this location, and we are removing some old scraggly trees along Pigeon Hill and through this area here, I'm replacing with a mixture of deciduous trees, evergreen shrubs, and native, you know, undergrowth. Along this corner here, there's a visibility issue, so we are proposing low deciduous ferns, and also some mixture of low native evergreens and deciduous shrubs.
Can you tell me about the species? When you say deciduous in various places, what kind of deciduous, what kinds of evergreens?
For example, up here we have white spruces, we have more white spruces, very common here, these are white pines that are being transplanted, they're on site. There are viburnums, there's a red oak, we have some rhododendrons, some mountain laurel ferns.
What about along the street? What are the, what are?
This is fern.
That's first, but the.
Yeah, talk about the greens, too.
The evergreens are up here.
No, but did you say you were going to put evergreens sort of in the bad traffic visibility area, so you could do the low ones?
When are they, what are those?
Let me just get my. We have a rhododendron here, we have two ornamental dogwoods up here, another dogwood here, so these are ferns here, transplanted, we're building from the foundation. Down here we have some chalmia, moving further along here, rhododendron, there is a mycorrhiza, down here we have viburnum, rhododendron, some more white spruces, rhododendrons, there's some oak is, more spruces. those are the oak is, more spruces and pines.
How big are those, that white pine, that you're going to transplant down to the old garage area?
We're looking for the most viable specimens on site, probably between eight, twelve feet.
Are you gonna tag those, or is our landscape consultant gonna work with you on figuring out which ones those are and signing off on them, or have you not considered that?
I was hoping that we would be able to use our own expertise on either.
I would treat them exactly like it was new stock coming in, that prior to planting, we need to inspect to make sure that they're, they're healthy and of the appropriate.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Who's talking about side lighting? Oh, sorry, sorry.
Before you go away.
Yes.
Yeah. Looking sort of, you know, straight line between the neighbors, what looks like a porch on the site, on the.
Up here?
Yeah, if you look behind you on that, you can sort of see the neighbors to their.
Yellow house.
Your lower right.
On the red.
That one. So that looks like a porch there.
Three Pigeon Hill.
And sort of that, between that porch and the end of the house, and that's the end of the house that, you know, has the walkout basement.
Bungalow.
It looks like four stories, even though it's technically only two.
It is four. But there's a lot of undergrowth, a lot of growth in that area.
Yeah, I'm sure in here.
But I don't think it's important that end, but even if it was, there's a lot of growth there now.
Okay, well, that's what I was concerned about, whether there's still between there and the house.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not removing anything.
The house will also be up quite high.
Yeah. It's an additional two feet, I believe, from the existing structure. Is that it?
Yeah.
But a lot more penetration up the side, okay? One, two, three, four.
There's actually only, we need four stories.
Right.
But there's a lot, there's a lot more left.
Lots more. We assume that the top.
It's all up higher, up higher.
Right. These are fairly, yeah, these are fairly large.
These were used, you have no idea, and it's undeveloped.
I don't see that on the plan as the existing, so.
We've kind of got cut off here, since we're not disturbing this area, we can show it. There's, there's a lot of, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, David?
Do we have an area marked out for the area of non-disturbance?
Yes.
Pretty much.
Those are the engineer plans.
As a worker's showing, it is orange red line running around this way, coming out pretty close to the property line, straight across. You have a couple areas that are shaded in the dark or green, which are areas that we'd like to augment as well, so there, we did top in the sidewalk without the removal of some of the spruce along the Pigeon Hill frontage that were in pretty rough shape due to the power line trimming, so those will be taken out, and then there will be some augmentation to that area, depending on where it's.
Well, you know, David's question's a pretty good one, because down in that lower way corner, you know, just off, sort of off the landscape drawing, is where that garage is. That's, that's where the augmentation, the real, the white pine augmentation should take place, because you look, if you picture that garage gone, you're coming right up the street there, and that's where you look at the, at the end of that house, so.
We have mentioned, I, I.
We have that, actually.
Where is it?
Right here. And you can see that on, you know, this corner, it doesn't, the property line's flipped off, but it's pretty close, yeah.
Is it pretty close?
Yes.
So it should be right in this area, right in here, the former.
Where these, these.
And, you know, we do have, there are a bunch of white oaks in here, and these are all to remain, so this would be the.
Yeah, they actually come up in here.
The new ones go into the, where the garage.
That's not already clear on the landscape drawing.
How do you intend to protect those?
The white oak during construction.
These will be tree protection, that's what we installed around the perimeter. There's really no earthwork, per se, to be, really, the only activity down here will be essentially the removal of the garage. There's what looks like the remnants of a stone wall here, will be actually relocated to the property line, and the rest will just be.
By the perimeter, you mean the perimeter of the drip lawn to protect the roots?
That's correct.
You're the landscape person, right? That's what you guys have in mind?
Yes.
Just adding to your question, though, David, about the no disturb line. Why does, why is, does the no disturb line not extend across the sort of southeastern boundary there? Why, why is it right on the property, right in, yeah, right in there? Why is, why is that not included in the no disturb?
This is an area that is presently, if I remember correctly, is essentially, there's some undergrowth and it's kind of, just hasn't really been managed over the years.
Since the septic system was put in, so we wanted to scrape that down.
Just strip it? And what's, what's gonna take its place?
Long.
That's gonna be grass all the way to the neighbor?
No.
Well, the area out back here will be, you know, essentially more of a no seed mix area in this area.
Talking about the boundary line with the next door neighbor, that's gonna be grass.
That's correct. Up to the stone wall that's there.
No planting at all, just grass to the stone wall.
In the middle section.
That was our, because there's a lot of existing undergrowth on the other side.
Nothing there? No screen planting at all?
Here, to there.
Yeah, no screen planting at all.
If you can't even see that pad guard from Pigeon Hill proper, I mean, there's a lot of screening on their side of that wall.
I thought you were just keeping, I thought that was just gonna be kept in the existing condition, that you were just, on the sidewalk, it sounded like this area here was what was gonna be cleared, but this area you weren't gonna be touching.
Not tonight.
I know, that's.
Did you want, did you want it?
I wanted to open it up so we could see the stone wall. It's a nice stone wall, and there's a ton of undergrowth here to separate these guys from us.
But my impression was the same as Joe's, you know, that, I'm kind of surprised, because when we were on the sidewalk, the distinct impression I had was that everything sort of southeast of that, of the septic system is gonna sort of stay, if not overgrown, at least sort of stay vegetated, stay not just, not just grass, so it's kind of a surprise.
A little bit more meadowish than lawnish.
Something, yeah.
Even lawnish isn't that bad, but just to have this lovely, wonderful view of the stone wall, while lovely, maybe it needs to be softened a little bit, I think that's what I'm hearing here.
What do you want to change? Five or 10 feet of existing whatever there is.
I don't know about existing, because I recall it's, it's stuff, right? But you have some things you can clear, I mean, there's a million white pines down there, right?
Maybe.
Yeah, but there are some white pines, maybe you could add in some more of your calmia or something like that, and not naked, so you can't, so you can't see the stone wall at all, you know what I mean, is to soften, there'll be something there.
These are lights that we've used in the past on different projects, that are night sky, except full or approved. On the, there is one fixture over each garage door. It's an eighteen watt fluorescent in this style.
Where's the bulb in that?
It's behind the tinted glass.
It's not up in the, can't be in the housing. Okay, so the tinted glass is what, you're, you're going, the light is shining through the tinted glass, that's what makes it?
Yeah, glows. Doesn't, it really subtle lights. I mean, we used them on our Sunday Woodhouse, and I think it puts out a really nice light, kind of gray-yellowish from the glass.
And what's, what is the, what's the stat on that?
It's, there's ten, there's one range.
Limit rating.
Or wattage?
It's an eighteen watt fluorescent. So it's fluorescent. Twelve hundred lumens per.
And how many fixtures, where are they?
There's two here, yeah. The other ones are similar but smaller, but they're also the same, eighteen watts.
So the twelve hundred.
There's two at the front door, two at the front doors here, there's one at the rear door, and one at the lower pocket.
How many up are there?
Six. We've got two of the B fixtures.
Is that fixtures, somebody?
Yeah, fixtures are six.
Yeah, so there's eight total, so twelve hundred watts a piece, or twelve hundred lumens a piece.
Yes. We've got seventeen six for us total, including ten. There will be landscape lights, tap lights, ten, two diffused well lights, and then a ceiling light for the overhang of the back porch, the same design, same spec.
Where's this, where's that?
There is one in this landscape area and one here.
So is it an up, what kind of a light?
It's a diff, it's a well light, it's a diffused up light, so it's really just spreading the light around the lower area. It's mounted in the ground level, that's great.
You say all of these are dark skies, I was.
Yes.
Reusing the forest.
Without the diffuser, that one isn't compatible with the diffuser, because it's an up, having an up light. The diffuser keeps the light contained.
Horse cruise.
Oh, Al, you are such a stink. Have you been around this track before?
Okay, so there's a, where's the pole light?
It's here. So you're telling me, there's one pole light, one glow light.
What are all the lumens on that one?
It's the same eighteen watt, twelve hundred lumens.
And this guy, where's, where is he?
That's, there's an overhang of the second floor over the first floor here, so it's mounted on the ceilings, chosen.
Four hundred lumens again?
That one has to be retrofitted with a fluorescent bulb. So. It's twenty-four hundred. That's what it comes with, yeah, it doesn't have the pin base, the other fluorescent fixture, so it's a same.
So is that second floor light over the porch adequate for the requirements for the door to the floor?
Yes, yeah, that's right.
Close enough or bright enough or whatever?
Right, it's ceiling lamp, if you're there.
So that's close enough.
Honestly, don't, you know. We can always replace it with one of the best lights, I just don't, I don't know what the regulation is, I'm constantly, I just know the door has to be illuminated somehow.
Right, trying to light your door.
So the neighbor to the north sees that one wall mounted fixture, and two garage lights.
Well, her view is about this way, you know, from the. So, I mean, if we. Yes. She won't see the light, she'll see light, but won't see the lights.
Yeah. Does she see any of the lights on the east side? Is that, those are the two ceilings.
This is mounted over there, so she wouldn't see the lights. No, this is downhill from her, and it's not good on the ceiling. The post light, she'll obscure by her lines, to the north.
Yeah. Okay, well, any other information you want to present to us at all?
We've always really liked the planning board.
That changes everything.
I know your line.
I'm looking forward to building the house, I've always liked this design, and I, that's all I can say, I think it's gonna fit in pretty well.
David, any comments on the engineering?
So the stormwater's fine, there's a lot of boulders, are we thinking of boulders or the ledge on the site?
They're boulders.
We're optimistic.
We've got three or four test plates.
Yeah.
Pretty much, it's actually surprising.
All right, and the pile of rocks is gonna go away.
The green field.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, just, just quickly, I just want to mention, at the sidewalk that was discussed about, why is it, why is the driveway coming in Hilltop, why not Pigeon Hill, all right? I just want, I was kind of playing around a bit, looking at it, and going to the assumption that you got a normal-sized house with a garage, you can always do something that's particularly small and doesn't have a garage, you say, oh, you're coming on the park, just with that base assumption. You'd have to come in about the middle of that, that curve of Pigeon Hill Road for a garage or whatever, and then you'd have, you'd have to have wa, definitely have walls, I don't know if you'd do it, I didn't get that far, if you could do it legally, but it'd be pretty sizable walls on the downhill side, supporting up some sort of driveway apron, and then you'd have to kind of shave off on the uphill side, you know, whatever happens there, I mean, you really wouldn't just.
You're saying that it's really not practical?
I, I mean, it's not practical, but I, you know, it was brought up and everyone, you know, because we do this a lot, and it's all kind of, we can all kind of jump to that conclusion quite, kind of quick, I just wanted to kind of map out a reason why it wasn't practical.
Okay, that's good.
Or it didn't appear practical, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kim provided comments via email.
Well, I just want to be sure that, when you were talking about the, the green field in the lot, I mean, that's not in the, that wasn't in their presentation, so that should be a condition, I hope, okay?
And the big pile of rocks, it looks like it was there since they did the septic excavation.
Yeah, okay, so that's, okay, well, good. All right, what did Kim have to say?
I've had numerous emails for response for both, Christine and Jeffrey expressed my desire to see a healthy, thanks Sarah, to see a healthy woodland edge at the perimeter of the scenic road, since the board has agreed to remove all of the declining existing trees at the scenic road, which I agree is a good idea, is going to be in part of that healthy plant material is put in place. This should include low ground cover at the street edge, Christie and I agreed on firms, so as not to impact vehicular visibility, and a higher mix of screening evergreen trees, spruce, et cetera, native shrubs, viburnum, broadleaf evergreen, et cetera, clusters deeper into the buffer edge where vehicular visibility is, will not be hindered, but where screening of the new structure to the scenic road is critical. Jeffrey expresses his desire to not include a scaling tree at the rear of the property as suggested by Sue at the sidewalk, but considering the number of tree removals at the scenic road, I believe, is small, as she said.